Good morning. It is January 18, 2022. This is the meeting of the Story County Board of Supervisors. Please join me if you're able in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We have a motion to. Oh, that's my agenda.
Oh, salute, second.
Move to the second, Ed. Ted, inside. Merkin? Hazel, I, sorry. Apologies on our late start today. And before we get started, I just want to take a minute and recognize that yesterday was Martin Luther King Junior Day. And, and hope that everyone can take a few minutes just to reflect on the lessons that Dr. King spent his life living by and teaching lessons of service, equity, justice, and nonviolence. I think we're really fortunate right now to live in the world of YouTube and the internet and have the opportunity to take a few minutes out of our day and listen to one of Dr. King's many speeches. And just reflect on where we are and where we, where we're going. Now we will move on to public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. If you're in the audience and would like to make public comment, please step forward. If you are on Zoom or on the phone, you can unmute yourself by dialing star nine or raising your hand. Seeing no one will close public comment number one and move on to agency reports. What was Veterans Affairs? Good morning.
Good morning. Morning, Ward.
All right. Well, I'm here to report on the Story County Veterans Affairs Quarterly Report. Period covers October 1 of 2021 to December 31 of 2021. Briefings from the Commission of Veterans Affairs. Commissioner Monty Woodward is currently our chair. Nick Brucino is our vice chair. Luke Vance, our secretary. And our two members is Beth Hartman and Amy Rosenberg. During the second quarter of this fiscal year, we, we, we seen 221 veterans and/or surviving spouses for eligibility for federal, state, and county veterans benefits. The breakdown of that 221 interviews, 170, 187 were men, 34 women, 30 who served during World War II, 31 who served during the Korea War, 38 served during Vietnam War, 32 who served during Persian Gulf War, 27 who served during the Cold War, which is in between all those wars, and 30 who served either in Iraq or Afghanistan, eight National Guard and 25 surviving spouses of veterans. The breakdown of all that. Also during the quarter, we had education classes. In the fall, on October, the 11th, we had four out of five commissioners that attended the Commissioner's School in Des Moines. And Aaron and I attended three days for the Fall VA Directors and County Veteran Service Officer School. An outreach during the quarter, of course, November the 5th of 2021 at the Plex, we hosted our annual supermarket of veterans benefits. 61 veterans and 12 spouses, along with 18 agencies were in attendance. A special thank you to the County Board of Supervisors, County Treasurer and Assessor for your support and attendance. October 25th, 2021, the office produced a email, a paper email and a paper newsletter and an email newsletter that went out to 3,200 Story County veterans and their, and in their homes. The American Legion VFW, Vietnam Veterans of America, in the county also received a copy. During the quarter, the department also completed jail and home visits along with homeless veterans, residents, of veterans who live at nursing homes and/or assisted living. Our annual donation drive for the Iowa Veterans Home was held during the month of November and the first week of December. With help from the County Treasurer's Office, Gilbert Lyons Club, and all others who were involved, we collected a truckload of items, including 15 32-inch televisions for residents at the Iowa Veterans Home. Delivery was made on December the 10th, 2021. Thank you for allowing me to serve as your county VA director. Jenny?
I only have my question. So, Red, see at the Plex. So, I know the room was huge, so it looked like less people, but did you really have less people? And I know, you know, the pandemic has led into many people, but did you see a mark drop on that this year?
Yeah, we did. And of course, you know, last year, we didn't have it at all.
Right.
Yeah, we went to a bigger room just for social distancing, just to make everybody feel a little bit more comfortable. And attendance was down. Probably by 30. Normally, we were in the 90s. But mostly we've ever had 151. So this time we had, you know, 61 veterans.
Well, it did look for my time that people that were going around to different vendors, they were having some good conversations. What they had more time.
Yep, we, we did. And, and actually, from, from, from that event, there was a, with all the different agencies and all the different things, we had several veterans that attended that for their first time. Of course, we did. We always have a few that are repeat offenders that just come for the coffee and the, and the donuts. But a lot of them learned about benefits. They didn't even know that they would be eligible for, so. And I recently learned that one of them that was in attendance there is now 100% service connected. So it was well worth it. Well worth it for him to show, to show up. Now, all the things in that room, we could, we could do most of those things in the office, you know, one at a time, one percent at a time. So by, you know, having this kind of an event, wow, we've seen 61 veterans in one day. So. Yeah. So even though those numbers are down, I think they'll, I think next, I think this year they'll pick back up, but it might be, it might have been a COVID thing. And of course, we skipped the year.
Right.
And everything. So, yeah. So we'll try to do it, try to do it again. Sure.
I was glad to see the people who were there. Yeah, a lot of, a lot of good.
Yep. Yeah.
And I, I, I'm glad to see the outreach that you're able to do now going out into the community. I think it was the Zering Newsletter that they have a full page reminder that you're going to be there, meeting with people and to sign up.
Yep.
To meet with you. So I was really glad to see that, too.
Yeah, I got kind of, I thought of that, you know, we hadn't done it since March 18th of 2020 is when we actually shut it down in, in Maxwell, I believe, is where we were at that day. And, and so we thought, well, in 2022, let's see if we can start this back up again, you know, and wear, wear masks and get back out there and see the veterans. So, yeah, Zering is in the January, and then we have Colo and Nevada, I believe, in February. And then I have one in March, which is in Slater. So we just kind of start out with those towns and I always kind of tried to see if I can make a couple rounds a year, you know, and to set up, basically, it's, it's setting up an office there. Zering is so great that the clerk there, Zering, I think she acts like my lobby host or something. And she's, sometimes when I get there, you know, she's got people already lined up to come in. So, hey, they don't have to drive. They can just come down to City Hall and check on their benefits and see if I can help them out, so.
That's all right.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you for doing that.
You bet.
Thank you, Brett. Next, we have Ames Economic Development Commission Quarterly Report. Brenda Dreyer and Brad. Good morning.
Good morning. I see that even the city clerk from Zering is on the line today. So I'm sure Brett, she appreciated that shout out. Hi, Karen. What a, what a pleasure it is to, to be with you all today. Happy New Year and excited to see what, what the year has in store for, for Story County. I'm going to be covering the workforce report for the fourth quarter, and then I'll hand it over to my fairly new coworker, Greg Picklap, and to, to talk about the outreach efforts of our office on your behalf. Let's start first with workforce. First slide shows where we're at from an unemployment standpoint for November. This is the most current data we have. I suspect sometime this week I'll see the December data. When that becomes available, I will shoot that out to you. That'll be the data we kind of live with then for the year. So I'll, I'll get that out to you as soon as we get that. So we're still trending downward from the peak we had in April of 2020 as the pandemic was starting and things were shut down. So we're at 1.8%. If you compare that to a year ago, we were at 2.4% in November. And the important, important thing that I'd like to stress is that we've regained 1,700 positions over that 12-month period. So as I report to you the December year end data, I'll, I'll give you the final count in terms of, of where we're at. We're still quite a ways in terms of our labor force number. We all know that people dropped out of the labor force, including here in Story County. So that's a number that is impacting our employers finding work for us. So we'll give you the year end data when it becomes available. It seems like the years go by quickly, but it's time for us to do an update on our labor shed and, and keep in mind that a labor shed looks, looks even further at our employment situation beyond what the monthly unemployment data does. So we know there's a lot of folks that drive into Story County for work. And so the labor shed report looks at kind of a, a more regional picture on, on our labor. It's updated. Years ago, we used to have to come knock on the door of you all and our other partners across the county to actually pay for those. And now, now the state pays for those. They're electronic. You can find the data online. You can manipulate it in finding specific data points. So we've come a long ways on labor sheds. So the first step was for employers to actually submit their zip code information. So while into that step, then they'll take that data and then they'll make, send out paper surveys in concentrations, like the biggest concentration will go out to a representative sample from here in Story, and then it'll, it'll filter out through there. But that'll be the second step. They'll start that soon. And I hate this, but it takes about a year to get it done. So they do about half the state each year. And so, so I, I wish that was done a little quicker. I think it would be really interesting to compare what that looked like in, in 20 compared to what we have now. So anyway, that, that's in the works on the, on the labor and workforce side of things. And as we look at our first quarter, we'll be participating in an Iowa barnstormers event. They're doing kind of a partnership of workforce development on, on a job fair. We'll be participating tomorrow night in the Welcome Fest at the University. That's important as we're out promoting part-time opportunities and summer internships in the county. So we'll be working on that tomorrow night. In March, we have the Big 12 Virtual Career Fair. I know you've heard me talk about this before, but that's a great career fair for us because they know where Ames and Iowa State's at. So we actually pick up a lot of really good leads from, from areas. It really kind of the swath to the middle of the country down to Texas and of course, over to West Virginia. So that's a a good event that we market to those leads at least three times following that event. And then we participate in the career fair with the LAS College. What we know about the LAS grads is they're the, the college that's most likely to stay in the region after they graduate. And so we've chose to participate in that. That's been a good event for us. And as we look at the first quarter, when you think, well, what about engineering? Our, our employers do a really good job covering the engineering career. So that would be another group that, that is very attractive to our employers, but they're already covering that. So that's a little bit on kind of the overview. Go ahead, Linda. Yeah.
Welcome Fest. The county does get a lot of seasonal during the summer.
Perfect. I will certainly make sure that's on our radar. So.
Southern Berry Roads and Conservation in particular.
Good. No, we'll, we'll help promote those. I know Alyssa and her team do make sure those are posted on marketing. So we're driving traffic to work on these, but I'm glad to mention that. So you know, it's.
And those are the two big ones I've seen, Lance.
It'll be interesting tomorrow night because of course, the women's basketball team is in town tomorrow night and they're doing well. And so I think that'll pull some students that might normally attend the, the Welcome Fest, but it's a good event for us. And we'll certainly make sure we highlight those opportunities. Those are, those are great jobs for our college kids. It is so good to be back at full staff as an organization and, and Greg's just an important, one piece of all of that. But part of what's reflected in the data you have in front of you is now we have some staff working a lot on our websites and our digital media and our relocation emails. So you're going to see that these numbers are as strong as they've ever been. Again, because we are full at staff and people committed to this. You can see the, the digital media efforts around Work at Ames, which is our countywide job board. We reached almost 40,000 people with those efforts. You know, we've picked up a large number of, of followers on those efforts. The website, which would be the workatames.com website, you can see the number of users to that site. 87% of them are new. Almost 20, over 20% are kind of in that 25 to 34. You can see the number of women users, how many different sessions, and of course, the page views on jobs. And so all of our efforts are really around trying to get people to that website so we can connect them to all of our employment opportunities. You can see the number of relocation emails that we've been distributing. Okay, those go to job fair leads. The Homebase Iowa emails, one of the numbers for folks that they always point out to me or digital media, the open rate on our veterans' emails are 46.3%. So Brett gets those leads, Leanne and I all get those leads, and we're marketing, we're doing a drip campaign to those leads. But fabulous open rate on those veterans that, that are interested in work. You can see the future-ready numbers there. Nikki will, you know, talk a great deal more about that, but we're continuing to also market to our future workforce. The See Yourself at Ames, of course, would be our, our intern event. So our good data is fun to be able to continue to push out that information. And so we're excited to have Greg join us. He joined our staff in December, a little earlier than we had, had planned, but his background as a council member, a strong background in economic development. I feel really good about the resource and outreach we're going to be able to provide our, our rural communities. And so as you know, I've sat in that chair a few times. I care a great deal about those communities and the work that they're doing. And so it's awesome to have somebody that, that knows, knows that the types of information's going to be helpful to them. So I'll hand it over you, Greg.
Good morning. I jokingly tell my communities when I'm going around, I've literally been on the job three weeks because of the holidays. So there's squeeze the holidays in there, and I have about three weeks of work in, in outreach right now. So reaching out to all the local communities, all 10 communities right now that I deal with, I am scheduling or have scheduled meetings with them all the way through. So I have all 10 taken care of. Examples, I'm meeting so far with elected officials and staff, deal everything from wellness, demolitions, housing, safe house, the school, Main Street, TIF, infrastructure. As you can see, it's, it's a list. And I waited until after January to start going to council meetings until the newly elected officials were seated because I didn't want to start the process, then reset it. I want to thank all three of you for meeting with me in December in your busy schedules. I really appreciate doing that first so that way I had the idea before I went out of knowing what was coming and what was on your minds. Other participating initiatives I've been included on or am on, Story County Housing, Real Broadband, ambulance service for rural areas, federal infrastructure bill. Lot of questions I'm coming out of DC on the federal. And so far, all my information is that it's going to be probably early 2023 before those dollars start hitting. That's the, this is exact opposite of what's coming out of the recovery plan. They're going to take their time and roll those dollars out slowly through the state to make sure that the dollars get done because those are basically the next infrastructure or, I want to say interstate highway system. It's going to be long-term. So they want to make sure it's done right. The federal bill assistance, joint nuisance enforcement position, I haven't talked to Amelia. So far, we've had Story City, Colo, Roland, and Huxley respond to the survey. Those are not all the communities, obviously, of course. So during my tour, I'm going to be emphasizing, pushing them to go to the survey link that Amelia has out there and hopefully get every community on board in, in what the response is on that nuisance position. That's something a couple of you I met with specifically asked about. So me and Amelia are working on that, and that's going to be part of my introduction toward accounts members as well.
What's their interest so far by the communities?
Well, so far, the interest seems to be a little different from every community, depending on the size. But we want to wait and we want every community to fill out the same form. So every community has the same information to us because nuisance position means different things to different communities. Huxley's nuisance issues are different than Roland's. Roland's issues are different than Colo's. We want every community to fill out the survey first, and then we can start judging. And I know we're on a timetable because February is your meetings. So I'm really going to be communicating hard on that and get that as the top of my list so we can get that off mine and Amelia's to-do list, if you will. So. Next bridge. Upcoming events, February 11th. Thank you all three for responding to that email when I sent out that invite. Guest speaker, Iowa Economic Director, Debbie Durham, is going to be coming to what we're calling the Development, Economic Development 101 Training. It's basically the toolbox of economic development tools for communities and for counties. We're going to be dealing with basically the meat and potatoes of it, but it's everything. And it's a good training scenario for newly elected officials and civic leaders. So it is open to both government and private leading economic developers. So if you're talking out in the community, it is going to be a fabulous training session, lunch, small fee provided, and it's going to be people from all over the Ames MSA. So it's going to be Story and Boone County officials. And we're getting a good response so far from, we'll get cross-section. So it is going to be fun. Late Spring Housing Summit. This is something that me and Brenda and Leanne are talking about. The Housing Summit was something that was pushed off in, off 2021 just because of your patience with everything going on. We're going to be targeting that for late spring with the, the state legislature wrapping up, seeing what the, the most recent legislation and tools are going to be out there about. The Housing Summit's going to be focusing on what the state and what the federal is going to be providing, and also to what can we expect in the next 18 to 24 months? That timeframe is what we're looking at for infrastructure because everything I'm seeing is going to be housing is going to be part of that, especially rural housing. And as you three know, rural housing is at the top of every community's list. So we want to make sure that if they're going to be planning this along with the infrastructure bill coming out, we're going to be planning, what is your top 10? You know, what's your infrastructure? What's your water? What's your sewer? What's your quality of life? So these communities are ready to jump on and help you. And hopefully these dollars, when they start being allocated, is done seamlessly and everyone's on the same page and everyone has the same information.
So what do you have for questions for us related to outreach or workforce? It's on your minds today.
The infrastructure bill, my understanding is that the state, when it comes to states, the states decide how to disperse it. Do they have a lot of leeway there, a lot of, you know, wide discretion?
There is some discussions going on on what type of discretion, but it seems to be, it's going to be two parts. The first part is going to deal with traditional infrastructure, sewer, water, roads. The, basically, everyone agrees this infrastructure going back for 150 years of local government infrastructure. The second half of the infrastructure bill is dealing with the new things called infrastructure, childcare, quality of life, housing, much more housing money than was originally, originally planned for. That's the second part. So when they're saying 2023, I expect 2023 is when the traditional portion starts being allocated all the way through for the next 18 to 24 months for the second half, which is the new stuff that is being deemed essential, childcare.
Is there that money coming directly to counties to?
Going to flow through the state.
But I mean, will the state, like, look at regional planning?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Will the state look at regional planning agencies, or will they look at the traditional ways of getting transportation money out?
Everything so far is going through the traditional avenues for regional, local government, things like that. They don't, they don't want to create new bureaucracy. The, the reason the timeline's so stretched out in the second half is because the second half is brand-new essential infrastructure that's never been done before, childcare and things like that.
Or they might have to look at counties.
Counties, nonprofits, regional partnerships. I know some cities, in fact, are looking at urban renewal district funding for some childcare initiatives as well. The Iowa League Cities is, is putting that information out there as a new avenue source. Every community's talking childcare because they know if they have childcare, people are looking at moving to their towns if they have childcare options. And especially now in these smaller communities, telecommunication is becoming huge. Someone that works in Wells Fargo can live in Colo and, and work all day, but they still need childcare and they still need transportation needs.
Can you see more broadband?
Broadband, money, broadband is part of it, especially in rural areas. But honestly, the focus for rural areas so far seems to be housing and sewer water. That seems to be the, the focus of the infrastructure bill so far. But I'm not saying that can't change, but right now that seems to be the focus.
I would have a question, but I just appreciate you kind of checking out the bandwidth and getting out, making those appointments right away to meet with all the newly elected officials and clerks and members also in the communities. Yes, just keep out there right away.
Thank you. Thank you.
Face time, really important job.
Face time and, and navigating holidays and sickness and COVID and, and rescheduling and everything else. And I will, I will double down on Zering because I know Karen's on there. That's, that was one of my first meetings, and that was a great kickoff for the, the half for Zering. That is one of my first meetings right there. So so far, my, my responses have all been positive, and there's a real hunger from communities to, to work with supervisors and, and us as that, the each chamber and to get some stuff done. So.
Our, our goal is, and I know Dan has shared this with the three of you as well, is our goal is really, as we were talking with Greg, that this is a very important relationship. And we know that there's been turnover. And that's our cities, our communities have done a great job, but we're very excited that, that this really is in so much in Greg's wheelhouse and his background is sitting there. I, we just, we hope that this will add some real stability to the position. And so we're, we're excited that, that he's got the right, the right skill set, I think, to be supportive to that whole laundry list of things that, that are going on with them. So it's great to have that test. It is.
It, it's, it's pretty amazing when I walk in the door to some of these places and talk and they're like, you know what TIF is. And it's, it's amazing. It, it definitely opens up and, and helps the conversation along. And I, and I will forget to add this because it wasn't part, but our LOIS system, we are going through countywide to every community and updating our inventory for commercial spaces. We have a waiting list. I know a mile long on our commercial money needs for employers. And these rural communities are probably right at the forefront of areas that could be looked at. So we are offering the service of them giving us data. Brenda, we found some place through the Global Gilder Community Page that had a commercial space, 1,400 square feet that we put on. That we put on LOIS for free to our one of our new positions that she mentioned. And then that is prime real estate regil work to that cost them nothing to send us that information. So if you hear those locations, by all means, please send them to us because we'll get them up in our system. That's all I got.
It's good to be a full staff. I know, not like that, but I I'd be happy with three, you know, but you know, it, we don't like to drop the ball and. And it is, it's just, it's just great to be able to. Be able to do those value added things that for the last couple of years, we've not been able to, as we've tried to be very sensitive to our resources and. And what what light ahead in the future. But that's, like I said, the addition of being able to to put even retail in addition to the industrial, I think it's a nice value add. To the communities and and now more than ever. People are understanding that they don't have to be in a metro in order to do business. And so. It's it's exciting to see some of that, those things happen out there. So. As always, if you have follow up questions, we're just an email or call away and. Plan that I'll share probably via Greg, I'll share the unemployment data for for December when it becomes available. So. I'd be remiss, thank you for your continued support on so many different things and on behalf of our citizens. We try to always acknowledge that our services are available only because of a commitment from you all and. And so it's nice publicly to acknowledge that what we do here and in the relationships we have are so unique. From anywhere else in Iowa. So thank you for your investment in our communities and and we appreciate. Your trust in our organization to provide those services. No, it's 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 a great, great to be able to have a lot of other things to do. So.
Next, we have consideration of minutes. Does anyone have a chance to look over the minutes from January 11?
I know the approval of the minutes, January 1.
Moved in second and Merkin. Consideration of personnel actions.
I think most of the group now action has listed second.
Next consideration of claims. Claims is presented second. Seconded, Merkin.
I.
Ten, I.
Basil, I.
Consent to check out.
I would approve what consent to the items that consent of second.
Moved in seconded, tenants.
I.
Merkin.
I.
Basil, I. Brings us to public hearing items. First consideration of ordinance 301 aquatic facility. Kimberly, nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
Not much has changed since when we met on January 3rd. We did fix that typo, but basically we're here to look at our new ordinance that adopts. Chapter 15 of the Iowa administrative code swimming pools and spas by reference as well as. You know, adding some additional definitions that weren't in the code for clarification. And some additional things that will help us with our inspections and enforcement and ensuring that. Basically that there's better compliance with chapter 15 of those facilities. We had the stakeholder meeting on the 13th and everything went well. We have made some revisions based on what they said. We haven't had any other follow up since that time. So and it has been reviewed by both legal counsel for story county and Iowa department of public health as well. So I guess with that, if you guys have any other questions on the ordinance since last time.
I did not have any question. Okay, no additional questions. We'll open the public, the public hearing. Anyone who's in the audience or on Zoom, if you have any current, you can use the racing function or star nine. Now we can close public hearing. Okay. Ready for motion? I have. I'm. Ordinance number 301 aquatic facility. First consideration and setting second consideration for January 25. Second. Seconded, Merkin. Ten, I. Basil, I. Thank you. Thank you.
I think it was, I just.
Moving on to additional items, consideration of application from the city of Zering for facade improvement grant program. Yeah.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Karen.
Good morning.
This is actually the first time, I think, maybe Latifah, you've seen a facade grant application. It's been a while since we've had one come in. This is an application for the facade improvement grant program. The story county has had in place for a number of years. It really is truly a private public partnership. The cities act as the applicant, but the buildings are typically owned by local businesses. This is one from the next slide. Thank you. That, as I said, that the cities, city governments act as the applicants. They work in collaboration with the private business. The private business generally puts majority of the funding for the improvement of facade projects. The county puts up a percentage if approved and then the city is required to match or exceed that amount of the the county then. Does ultimately approve. Go to the next one. Eligibility criteria, again, as I've said several times, city is the applicant. It's for those. Communities that are under 2000 persons according to the 1910 census. Sorry, the 2010 census. Wow, went back a long time there. It's a one time reimbursement grant up to 20% or no more than $10,000. So it's either or. Of the total facade improvements and then the city has to, again, as I said, match that amount. The improvements are those that are visible from the exterior right away. Their exterior improvements visible through the right of way. They are as listed there. Either cosmetic and or structural and in most cases you see a combination of both. The structural does result in a cosmetic. The signage, signage can be an eligible project, but help, it's not limited or it does not allow billboard signage. Some murals, that type of signage. Lighting and landscaping. And again. Those three last items can, improvements are eligible, but really the cosmetic and the structural components need to be satisfied first. They just can't go in and put a new sign for a building that's deteriorated. So that's an important aspect. So the request is from the city of Zering. It's for this Quonset hut. And that many of you probably recognize from 201 East Main Street. The owner is R.L. Good. I mean, Karen is here to answer any questions on behalf of the property owner today. It's just a site map of the location from our beacon website and we can see the yellow box there. It's on the east half of Main Street in the town of Zering. Just to east of the Deacons Community Building and the next block over from that and and the city hall is the next block over. Next slide. So this is not what the proposed building will ultimately look like. It's just conceptual image that the applicant submitted. To get, give you an idea of what the the structural improvements may look like on the front. Karen will describe a little bit here when I'm done. What it may look like in addition to this. But again, that's just a visual depiction that was submitted with the application. The total improvement is a little over $31,000. So 20% of that is $6,253.08. That is the amount that they are requesting and the city of Zering is committed to to matching that amount as well. And thank you to Greg. He went out and visited and took some sight shots. Of the building. You can see on the top image, the building's in the northwest corner of the property. There is some significant rough damage. That you can see. As well on the east side of the property. And then that's the lower image, the the lower left image is on the the west side of the building, the roof on the west side. And the the lower right image, you see that from the south side.
Block structure. I'm sorry.
It does look like it's CMU's, yeah. Yeah, you can see at least. In that right hand corner, it looks like. Concrete block. A slide, pardon me, is just a overview of the projects we've, the county has awarded since inception's program. It began in 2015 and the city of Zering was the first applicant. Over several years. Awards were grant, were were. Approved by the board of supervisors. If you want to go to the next slide. This is a summary by count by community though of eligible communities. I do want to note. City of Story City in fiscal year 2018 was approved. They are not an eligible community. They did request special approval by the board supervisors. It was approved, but they afterwards withdrew that funding request and not go forward with that project. But as the slide shows, I'll go back to that. Thank you. The percentages indicate the communities. The percentage of total funding that have been awarded to the communities over $50,000 has been awarded over the past. Six fiscal or eight fiscal years coming into this next fiscal year. And then staff does recommend approval, the request and then now $6,253.08 to the city's hearing, finding that all the eligibility requirements have been satisfied. And I know Karen is obviously. Available to answer any questions. If you had any questions for Greg to not put him on the spot, if you had any. I'm going to put him on the spot for that too.
I appreciate.
Questions for me?
I appreciate you posting or bringing up how the funds have been used over the years. I. I love that Zering is taking advantage of that opportunity and it looks like regularly taking advantage of of the opportunity. I think that's great.
I agree. I don't have one, maybe it's a comment or a question. The letter referred to local historic value. There, this is not historically a historic preservation issue at all. There's no, no. Because there are some significant modifications that are being made to the front. That if they were, but I, it was just the phrase local historic values. So I thought I would mention.
Neck that I caught that as well because I'm a little bit heartburn too because in the. In the program guidelines, it does indicate that if it's on the national register of historic places. Or anything in that regard, that level of local landmark designation on the sector area material standards for rehabilitation must be followed. This, the project as proposed would not, from my rudimentary knowledge of those would not be those requirements. But it is not, to my knowledge, on the national register.
Karen, I was shaking.
Yeah, no, it, no, it is not.
Yeah. Thank you.
I guess my question is, is there a particular time frame this case being completed by?
It, that is a good question. It needs to be completed within a year of approval, generally within a year of approval by the board supervisors. And we have a couple of that were approved. Slater was approved and then COVID hit. So given that with supply chain issues, there's been some delays and recent projects.
Is there ever been any cases where the money was not enough to go around on money and give that to them? I'm just looking at this and it looks to me like it's a whole lot of work to be done on this building. Wondering. It's 31,000.
And that would be for the the front of the building, the facade work.
That's just the front.
I don't know the degree to which. The property owners undertaking other projects, Karen, can you talk about that at all?
The the majority of the actual entire building will be restored and replaced. He is updating and wanting to update to maintain the roof's integrity across time and going with a metal roof. Also removing a couple of on those that side, replacing a few windows so that it will actually be. Weatherproof on the exterior and then the front, he is going to keep the door. Perhaps replace that window so that it's not so many little small blocks on the window, but more of a showroom window. And then by by also doing that, he is going to keep that roll up door as well so that it could be used. For a commercial space on that main floor because it is a two, two floor building. And so the the actual foundation is a block foundation, which is very solid and in good shape, thank goodness. So there's no repair that'll need to be done there. So he is able to use that lower level at this point and he is using that for some of his business storage, which is some. Brand new tires and things like that, but he is also using it as storage for community members for boats, for, you know. Lovely little gators and lawn mowers and things like that, that people have some storage issues and needs in the community.
The roof will be metal, a first metal roof.
Yes, he is going to replace that and it'll be a metal roof.
Okay. So all of that could be debt $31,000.
Yes, believe it or not. Yes, I even double checked with the gentleman that'll be doing the work and he confirmed without question that it will be able to be done for that dollar amount. I decided I want a metal roof now that he does such good work. So.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Look forward to see what it, how it turns out. Before and after.
Yeah.
Moving on to departmental reports, we have no departmental reports. So other reports. Discussion and direction to staff regarding membership in the Mid Iowa Planning Alliance beginning March 1st, 2022.
I could just you and I. We're lucky to see if folks from. The MPO are on. Okay. Um. I invited Brenda up here because Brenda is the acting. Chair of the board of directors for MIPA. So she could really go over some of the history. Just quickly, I'll have Bryce like kind of fly through his presentation with me. The staff at the MPO put this presentation together. It was on your agenda for today's meeting. It's just some historical background information on the formation of MIPA, which stands for Mid Iowa Planning Alliance. Some of this is not necessarily new to you all as you approved a resolution. A year or so, a little under a year ago. To actually go forward and and start the development. To actually go forward and start the development of the Economic Development District for Story in central Iowa, which Story County would could ultimately become a member of. If you go to this page that has feel free to jump in. So really, this, this slide shows what's been happening from point to now till the point going forward, formal 501, C3. Six paperwork has been filed. There is a interim Board of Directors that's been established. Now, MIPA, Mid Iowa Planning Alliance, working through staff members of the MPO are seeking to actually gain some additional support formal. Have member counties and eligible cities join MIPA formally, which includes fees, dues and and membership and voting and all that, which I'll get to here soon. But stakeholder discussions and all that really started last fall. In March to August, working with the MPO staff. No, the MPO staff working with all the jurisdictions for the interim Board of Directors. Put all the information together to file for Economic Development District. Develop the SIDS, there were survey mechanisms that were sent out. Asked for a bunch of different info. That's all been historical information, but then this past fall, all the formal materials were submitted. Has not been, has it been approved? It's been approved, so it's formally an Economic Development District. And then then starting this last fall, they started this formalize it, let's determine the formal membership, the D do structure and all that. So that's really where we are now. So it was, wow, it was January 2021 that the formal resolution was approved by the Board of Supervisors. To actually start the process along with all the other jurisdictions. And then all the counties are listed up there that did similar actions to Story County and then these ultimately became become members of MIPA, of Mid Iowa Planning Alliance. If you want to go to the next one. So why would we want to join formally? There are lots of benefits, really. We do not have a council of governments in central Iowa. This is not necessarily a council of governments. But it's another layer of technical assistance and expertise that could be offered to Story County and the jurisdictions within Story County, so not just Story County and government, but all of our larger and smaller jurisdictions. Everything from grant writing and administration to looking at local planning, the comprehensive plan updates, that that type of technical assistance could possibly come out of joining with the Mid Iowa Planning Alliance. Go to the next one. So the funding and new structure is set up on a per capita basis. It's seven, or if you look at the bottom part of that membership dues, it's 15 cents per capita annually for member jurisdictions. They're running on a start date of April 1st, 2022 for 15 months. And so if Story County were to join for that time period, be $1,711. It would be prorated for that first 15 months. And then future rates would be determined by the Board of Directors. Next slide. It would be staffed by the MPO, Des Moines area MPO. Currently, they have several staff members that have been working on this initiative to help guide the process thus far for MIPA. They will employ a senior planner and then MIPA then will contract with the MPO for the back office support as well. I think it'll be located at the MPO's office, the staff members and staff support at the Des Moines MPO staff offices in Des Moines. Next slide, please. Little bit about the representation. It could potentially be a very large Board of Directors, and I think everyone is very cognizant of that. That's why there you see an executive committee too, as well to help kind of guide some of the decision making and framework. But one member, one representative for member jurisdiction, two private sector representatives per county. And one each representing ISU, DMAC and the Greater Des Moines Partnership. Again, as I said, maximum of 125 members. But responsibilities of the Board of Directors would be adopting budget bylaws, which have been improved on an interim basis. Where they have been approved by the interim Board of Directors, not on an interim basis. The Comprehensive Economic Development Strategies, SIDS, any contracts over $50,000. Then the executive committee would be made up of two city or county reps from within each county. One private rep from each county to be appointed by members within the county, so that that really is much more manageable at 21 members. And then they have Yeah.
Wrapped from private entities. Bylaws and it says they shall be appointed.
That's a, that's, that's a good question we have to ask, I think.
Yes.
The big question.
Not clear. It's in section three. Oh wait, appointments will be made by the active corporation members within such county. So the city, all the cities and the county would have to all get together and decide on the two representatives for private entities.
And the next slide is benefits of joining or call to join. Relationships, federal agencies, ability to access future disaster funding, which again was one of the initiatives to start the whole process anyway, to develop the Economic Development District. If you recall back to a year ago. I already mentioned that the technical assistance and planning services that could come from this and then the point they made is a low barrier to entry with potential high return on investment that that dues and potentials for grant funding or whatever else might be for that initial investment. And then having projects on that SIDS, Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy project list. So with that, next slide is a question, and I don't think any of those entities are on.
I'm trying to recall from when we talked about this. The government, however many months ago that we talked about this. So wasn't there some conversation that since we were not a dedicated area, there were funds that we blocked out on or we could have tapped, we could have or we stayed a little bit on that idea?
Yeah, so where this kind of first surfaced was in, Ken, I think that, I'm almost sure it was the first CARES bill. There were direct awards made to these regional economic development organizations, so what we call it EDLs. And so most COGS, at least it's always been my working knowledge is that most COGS of the state of Iowa also have that EDO designation. And so all of them receive these blocks of money to use within their region in support of economic development efforts. And so because we did not have an established EDO in these counties, actually, it was, we, they projected we missed out on 470,000. I was going to round up to a half million, but so it really kind of brought to light, we've known for some time that even within our offices. Whenever we go after EDA funding, we have to go out and find grant writers to be able to do those applications. I'm, I've done some of those pieces of it, but to write a full, full EDA application is quite an undertaking. And so so that was when we first, I mean, so we've always had to seek out grant writing services, write a check, quite frankly, usually in excess of $5,000 in order to have those grants written. So that was always again on kind of our mind that if we had an EDO that didn't look, that wasn't a COG, that could be a service available to our community. So it's been on my radar kind of from those sorts of lost opportunities. And then it, it kind of brought it up higher in the priority level when those, when it was easy to allocate funds that direction. And and we didn't have a place for those funds to land. So I think we do believe that long term, whether it be future disaster funding or as other things roll through the federal government, that this will give us a place for funds to land for the region, so.
And because of the federal disaster proclamation for COVID-19, the pandemic, in addition to the 2020 Rachel. Story County and central Iowa became eligible since, first time since 2008, to be able to go down this path. And that, that, that's what kind of everything said, the time is right now. I think everyone thought the time is right. They had a sense of what might be coming down the pipeline for future funding. And then reached out and started the ball rolling.
And my question is that, since that dues is the first 15 months. So is dues to be, are you on 15 month cycle or is it a 12? And yearly, I'm just a little confused by how that.
I think they just got it to the fiscal year.
Right, right. I think that was, then I told the children.
So I think moving forward beyond this first time. Again, it'll be subject to the new Board of Directors to take action, but it'll then hopefully fall into an annual basis like coincides. But because we're kind of in the midst of this, that's why the 15 months. At least in my discussions, as I've been trying to help the other communities understand it's long term, we should probably be looking at a 12 month kind of investment.
Do you expect it to stay about 15 cents per capita?
You know, that's one of the questions I had too. I need to start working with the city of Ames on this, so that was one of the questions I was trying to anticipate. Again, it's going to be at the direction of that board. I, I would envision that with cheap, but just because those funds actually go to offset the staff, so I, I do think it would be hard to unless we just are overwhelmed by everybody joining. But maybe there could be some adjustments off the 15 when we have a better sense of who's truly going to be at the table for membership. I mean, if I stated that correctly.
I think there might be depending on what happens at the federal level, additional funding from the federal level on down to optimize local matches and allow for some longevity from an increased return on investment of all the partners.
Looking at the rate sheet. It looks like here, most of the larger entities join, we're going to have a pretty.
We're going to have an abundance of matches.
Yes, and and that is the budget. You must have a rough budget for the annual expenses that are going to be. It's the planner in the back office.
Yeah, and that's where I think the guys would have to, they would have to provide this, what that preliminary budget looks like.
$10,000.
Yeah, so, and that again, so again, I think it'll be at the board's discretion to get, depending how how far we've exceeded that match to what we really need to do long term.
And I can, today, today's intentions to reintroduce this to the board, because you have not seen it other than what I've been sending updates as we are going through the interim process. And then bring forward the, there's a formal resolution that would need to be approved by the, the Board of Supervisors. And then that would include the commitment fund. But I can ask for some budget information and in addition, maybe if there's some long term projections of what that 15% may, or 15 cents may or may not, how that may or may not fluctuate. I think they probably tried to join early. And couldn't.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had some issues with the.
So what I would say, I can give you a little snapshot of what I know is happening so far, so there's going to be, I anticipate a lot of activity on these resolutions in the next couple of weeks, just knowing what's in the pipeline, but I would, Zearing was the first community. It's all kind of about Zearing today, but Karen, Karen was one of the first to, they actually were one of the first across the whole region to pass the resolution of support. And obviously, they got a lot of projects in the pipeline and I think they see this as a real value. The data passed it last week at their council meeting and I know others have it on the agenda, so it's going to be a topic of discussion if you're talking to to other communities or as you're hearing from communities, I'm trying to make some decisions. So if there's questions that you can't answer, feel free to direct them to me or Greg also is very aware of this. He's been a part of it in his previous role, so.
You don't have a resolution in front of us today.
No. This is just for some direction back to get information and formally come back to the board of the resolution.
I would like to see a budget to see what they can add for expenses for a year and and the amount yet in the federal dollars that we get to support that. And maybe by the time we bring back the resolution, some idea of what communities have already agreed to. So in my mind, you know, it's, it's a 15 month commitment of $1,700. I think that's a very small commitment to put towards a project like this and and to see what good it does bring. I mean, it sounds really good. It just really gets down to what, what are we getting out of it?
The return on your investment, absolutely.
Exactly, but I, I think it's a small investment. What is the difference between creation that happened? What is the difference between council governance and EDO?
Well, council of governments, obviously, the, the breadth of their work is bigger than just economic development, so you know, obviously, again, what I would say is most of the council governments of Iowa also have transportation.
Or housing.
Housing, yeah.
So maybe we have regional.
We, we have, we, we're doing it with different agencies, but certainly where we have come up a little short is on this, being able to access and have support on a more regional level for the EBA, so the.
And council of governments when have been looked to when there have been federal disasters to help manage grant programs for homeowners. FEMA, for instance, or the Small Business, Small Business Administration following flooding dating back to 1993 and even as recent as over the last 2012.
Flood buyouts are often the agency that manages those.
Yeah, and they, but it's, it's similar though too, because MIPA will be staffed by trained planners, community regional planners, and that's generally who staffs the council of governments. So just a little different level of expertise, more in the economic development and community development realm than just the standard transportation, housing and the planners are generalist in approach, so they can do a little bit of everything.
I, I am hoping that we'll be seeing resolution. Reference to our at the next next meeting, next week. Public comment, this is a time for public comment. Number two, comments from the public on items not on the agenda. The board may not take any action on the comments due to the requirements of open meetings laws, but may do so in the future. Anyone who would like to come forward or raise your hand on Zoom to make public comment, please do so. Being no one, we'll post public comment number two. The honest liaison assignments, committee meeting, updates and announcements to these supervisors. The honest, liaison assignments, committee meeting, updates and announcements to supervisors.
Sure, I have on my calendar, I thought the university, the next. I go on and, we got that thunder meeting. I also have on my calendar, there's a A B C. Meeting Friday morning. On Monday.
Um, emergency management commission meeting tomorrow evening. I think it's super meeting Thursday morning, any check, I haven't seen an agenda yet. Creek WMA meeting. Tomorrow with Thursday, followed by asset joint funders meeting. And then. Any sessions Friday and. And Monday morning, the headwaters of South Bend, WMA meeting.
And today I have a story coming, housing trust meeting at two, and then our other workshop, work session this afternoon. This evening I have Serhau meeting. And then. Isaac University the next couple of days, Wednesday night I have. Jennifer Creative Justice Executive Board meeting Thursday night, asset to funders meeting. And then budget parents, budget session on Friday. There's a fuel event Friday afternoon that I am. Went to. Then I have. Naco Arts and Culture Commission meeting Monday afternoon and then budget session. And boost meeting Monday next, it's going to be very busy. Next seven days. Any other announcements or anything? Motion to adjourn. Seconded, Merkin. Penns, hi, Basil, hi, we're adjourned, thank you.